Welcome, Creator. With grateful hearts we thank you for all the blessings of life, families, friends, health, work, hope, love, and peace. Help us to remember that peace on earth begins in our own hearts, in our own homes, in our neighborhoods, our places of work, our schools, our streets, and the rooms, just like this sun tonight. Peace begins right here, right now. So we thank you, God, for your wisdom tonight, your blessing, as you guide each one here tonight. Those who definitely observe our beautiful city, help us, God, to remember that we are all your servants. Help us to know our role among others and to know how we can help for this and so much more. We say thank you. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Stephen Lee Grant, Vice Mayor Jesse Ket, Commissioner Maggie McCray, Commissioner Felicia Romulus, Commissioner Ty Pincirga, Del Quan.
And I remind the audience, please, if you're not in control already. May I motion to approve any additions, requests, or corrections to be amended?
We have a fellow listener in the audience, Daniel Sullivan, who has a question. He wants a few minutes to speak regarding the body proclamation. I'd like to ask that he be added immediately after three o'clock.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, motion to approve as amended. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
Yes.
Okay, I'm catching up, but I need staff, you know, to place on your, you know, to let us know about the update. It's gonna be an update. This is in regards to guns that firefighters will be carrying. I need to know what is going on with that. That's the law. They said that, you know, that firefighters, I'm just saying, you know, first responders. Okay, find out.
All right, you want to put that on for next meeting?
Yeah, next meeting, please.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none from the board, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, would you like to begin with any informational items?
Uh, nothing to disclose.
Commissioner McCray?
Nothing tonight, thank you. No disclosures.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes, I attended the Florida League of Cities Legislative Policy Committee this past week where I met with several other elected officials from around the state to discuss what our initiatives would be for, towards Tallahassee, for our cities. One of the things that we kind of really focused on was the Burt Harris Act and how it affects cities. And we were discussing what our priorities would be. So really, it was just more of a workshop and a discussion on what are the issues that are important and that affects a majority of our cities. There was also a discussion about impact fees, which is something that I know this board up here has discussed a lot. So any input from the board is welcome, as we will continue to debate those things. July will be the next committee meeting where we will vote on what our priorities will be. I was appointed to the Land Use and Economic Development Board, or Committee, which I actually find that I love even more so than the initial board that I was booted off of, thanks to the mayor. I had to find another board because he took my spot, but I do enjoy sitting on that new committee. And it's a lot of information, I believe, is very relevant for our respective cities. So again, that's really what we covered, and July will be our first vote on what we choose to have be our discussion or our priority item for this upcoming session. And being that we have our legislators here in the audience, I think it's a very fitting time to have these conversations. That is all I have for today. Thank you.
Mayor, before you move on, I'd like to tell Commissioner Romulus, thank you for your report that you brought back into this city. This is what I'm looking for when we send individuals off. If there's anything that we need to know about, this is what I'm saying, you know, bring information back to us. Thank you for doing that job. Well done.
My pleasure, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Pincirga?
I have no disclosures, however. I'd like to take this time to make a few informational items. It's not something I do every time. The first thing is that this Saturday, I'd like to encourage all of you to come and join me and volunteer. This Saturday is Future Six's third surf event of the 2019 season. If you recall, they were here last year. They're nonprofit, focusing on providing free therapeutic ocean-centric programs for children with special needs, five to 18 years old. They're looking for volunteers. You don't have to know how to surf, because I don't. And if you are gonna volunteer, come at eight o'clock at Oceanfront Park this Saturday. And if you have a child or know somebody, participants begin at nine a.m. But I'd also like to take this time to say a few words about Pride Month. June is considered National Pride Month, and it's a time when LGBT individuals around the country, we celebrate progress, we celebrate history, but it's also a time for us as a community to remind ourselves that we're not alone and that we are every bit worthy of love and acceptance. As we'll see in here later this evening, Mayor Grant will be making a proclamation, making this month Pride Month for our city. As a young gay man, as someone who grew up believing that people like myself had no place in society, let alone be elected by members of my community to public office, I want to personally thank our mayor for being a friend and an ally to me and to the community. Thank you, Mayor Grant, for having the courage and the vision for a modern city that recognizes that, you know, gays and lesbians and so forth are friends, they're our neighbors, they're our family, and that we are every bit a part of the fabric of our city. We may be different, but we're all different, and we're all children of the same God. This proclamation that he'll be making tonight sends the message that there is no place for bigotry and hatred in the city of Boynton Beach. I just want to also remind everybody that it was around this time, June 12th, two years ago, when 49 young LGBT individuals were massacred in Pulse, Orlando, and 58 more were wounded. This was the largest mass shooting in our country. I remember when I found out the following morning, I was crying on my way, on my drive to work, knowing that that could have easily been me and my friends, just wanting to go out, dance, have fun. As broken as I felt that moment, it reminded me that we have so much more to go and that we must never be complacent. I would like to ask our leaders and the public to honor all of those that were lost, not only by your prayers, but also with action. I want to end this time by asking everybody to take a moment of silence for the young 49 men and women who lost their lives that day, whose only crime was wanting to enjoy life and to be themselves. Thank you.
And thank you, Ty. I'm glad that, you know, we are here in this day and age. You know, it's grown up, it wasn't the way it is now, and so I'm glad that we are moving forward as a society. What I've done the past two weeks, June 6th, I was at the Hispanic-Latino Summer Institute, and I spoke over at our Veterans Park for D-Day, and they had a special presentation for the Battle of Midway. On June 7th, I was with Greater Boynton Beach Del Ray Entrepreneurship Leader for their ribbon cutting of Melt, the Mobile Entrepreneurship Leaders Training. On June 8th, I attended a special free football seminar hosted by Super Bowl-winning player Eric Matthews, who actually grew up in Boynton Beach. And I want to thank the Parks and Recs Department for allowing this to happen. It was amazing to see our young football players getting a learning from the best. On the June 9th, I went and spoke in front of the Korean War veterans. On June 10th, I was at trustee conference for our pension board. On June 12th, I went to the Quantum Foundation to learn more about adverse childhood experiences. I had lunch with the Boynton Beach Veteran Task Force and had an evening meeting with Sister Cities. On June 14th, I attended the BDB's luncheon with the guest speakers of Wayne Hazinga and Ben Carson. On June 15th, I attended the graduation of Connect Greatness. June 16th, even though I'm not a father, I was able to hang out with my father-in-law and wish all the fathers a Happy Father's Day. Yesterday, June 17th, it was the Tilt Party, and I'd like to thank Eleanor for throwing a great event and making sure that the public, that we are starting our new City Hall Library Complex building, which is very exciting. And I'd also like to let people know that on June 21st, this Friday, from 5:30 to 9:30, we are going to have a food truck invasion. I know it's been a while since we had one, but it's gonna be over at Boat Ramp Park from 5:30 to 9:30, and I believe that we're gonna have about five or six different food truck vendors there. And I Heart, one of the stations from iHeart Radio, it will also be there. And then also, I saw that the Merchant Strategy received selection, and I have spoken to Sharon Merchant, but not on any of the items on tonight's agenda. Is there anything else from the board before we move on? Seeing none. Moving on to announcements, community, and special events and presentations. We'll begin with Representative Joe Casello. Is Lori's not here, you're speaking on her behalf?
I'm led to speak on behalf of a senator.
Okay.
I learned that in my short time. Mayor, Commissioners, it's good to be back on this side of the mic and looking at all your faces. It's, I'll start by this quote here, "The government closest to the people serves the people the best." That was said by a great guy named Thomas Jefferson. And Tallahassee hasn't learned that yet, I can tell you that. It was quite a, people have asked me, "How was Tallahassee?" And, you know, we've gone to these legislative updates, and some people label them the good, the bad, and the ugly, and a Clint Eastwood, you know, theme type to them. I found it educational. And it's incredible coming from local government, going to a state-level type government where there's so many vested interests and special interest groups that come up, and they all want a piece of your ear, because they all have an agenda. And you can be in your office during these committee weeks, and these individuals, special interest groups, come through, and one minute you can be talking about a request to fund a research to save cancer, and the next 15 minutes, the following 15 minutes, someone comes in, you know, "We're saving the tigers at the Palm Beach Zoo." It's that vast, it's that big of a scope from A to Z as far as subject matter. And I found that very, very educational. So with that being said, this year, there was 3,571 bills filed. 196 of those bills passed. I'm proud to say that I did have one of my bills passed, it was the House Bill 987, it's called the Ratification of the Rules. You might say, "What's the ratification of the rules?" Well, this is the mechanism that allows the law to go into effect for the bill that was passed last year for the first responders, the post-traumatic stress disorder. So this is the rule that needed to be passed up there to get that started, and I was glad to carry that through and get it passed through the House with a lot of support. I'm gonna talk about some of the notable bills real quick, I'm not gonna take a lot of time here, I'm sure you've got a, I know, I know we wanted to sit there for a while and listen to people talk. So the one of the important bills was that passed, and it's been going on for years, taxing white driving. It was an Emily Slossburg bill, that happened to pass this year with a lot of Republican support, and was glad, it was good. The appropriation money for the Mangrove Park, a water project, Colin, we're gonna have to write up just a little bit better next time, and we're gonna bring it back up there. We'll refile it when we go back into session in September. Some of the local, getting back to the, you know, I don't like the word attack, but I'll use that word attack on local governments, and some of the local preemption things that they were trying to push through there, and they did push through a few of them. One of them is the plastic banning, plastic straws and bags. And they put a moratorium on banning anything plastic for five years. Thank God the governor, some common sense legislation, signed it and said, "No, we're not gonna do that." So that was a good thing. Occupational licensing deregulation, the licensing of hairdressers and barbers, they cut the time right in half, like from a $1,200 requirement down to $500 and $600 hours. And identification rentals, which was a big one for the community, especially gated communities, that did not pass, so that was good. On the healthcare side of it, we had direct healthcare agreements that would be allowed now with you and your doctors, so that's a good. Another important one, I think we're gonna have to get some federal approval on this one, is the prescription drugs, importing from Canada and still foreign lands to come in, bring our prescription drug prices down. That's a good thing. And there was no expansion of Medicare. There was a attack up there this year on education, you might have read about it, I'm sure most of you read about it here. Your own Commissioner Justin Katz was up there and spoke at the press conference, the fourth floor attendant, and I'll tell you, he knocked it out of the park up there, was very proud. You should be very proud of that, how he stood up for the educational people. The, one of the bills I want to talk about in a little bit of a depth is, let me get it out here, it's House Bill 1221. And I proudly co-sponsored this with Representative Polsky and Rashawn from Key West. And we've had this issue, it's about derelict boats. And those have been before, I wanted to call it the Harry Woodwork Bill, but they wouldn't allow me to do it, because Harry's been here a few times before this commission with some real concerns. So this prohibits a person from residing or dwelling on a vessel that has been charged by an officer over the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. Well, this is the key, any law enforcement agency has derelict. So now the Boynton Police, remember, we had issues like, well, you know, we can't get them out here to call it derelict, to label it derelict, but now our own Marina Police can do that and go out there. And this bill authorizes counties designated as rural areas of opportunity to create no-discharge zones under certain conditions, and provides a civil penalty for violation of the no-discharge zone. So now they cannot use a five-gallon bucket as a bathroom and come ashore and dump it. So that's a good, another good one. And it goes on to say that the anchoring vessels has created conflicts in some areas of the state related to the use and the enjoyment of waters, and questions about local governmental authority to regulate anchoring. Now we can regulate that on a local level, we don't have to wait for the fish and game thing. And local governments are authorized to generally permit to construct and operate, maintain public mooring fields, each up to 100 vessels. I don't know if we have any mooring fields where, we don't, but we can establish them now, and it gives us great latitude on how to police them. And both state and local law enforcements are authorized and empowered to relocate or remove a derelict vessel from public waters if the derelict vessel obstructs, threatens to obstruct navigation, or in any way constitutes a danger to the environment, property, or persons. And these costs incurred for relocating or removing a derelict vessel recoverable against the vessel owner. And finally, that the legislature passed in 2016, I believe, a law to prohibit neglected vehicles of those in deteriorating conditions from anchoring, mooring, or occupying the waters of the state. A vessel at risk, if, become derelict, if any of the following conditions exist, the vessel is taking out water, water without effect means to de-water it, spaces the vessel are designed to enclose or incapable of being sealed, the vessel has broken loose or in danger of breaking loose from its anchor. We've had that problem down there, some of the boats banging into the dock down there on the intercoastal, and the vessel is left or stored aground unattended in such a state that it would prevent the vessel from getting underway as listing due to water intrusion or partially sunk. So the bill goes on, there's a lot more meat and potatoes in that bill, but that's just some of the highlights of it, very proud to get that passed. I think it's gonna, you know, take some of the issues that we have out there in our special intercoastal, and now we have a tool to remedy some of those things. So on all, we're getting ready to go back up there in September, we're in the midst of doing some new bills, refiling some old bills. Senator and I had a bill on medical exemption for medical devices for the elderly, such as grab bars, toilet seats, shower stall seats, and that such. We couldn't get that out of committee, so we're gonna refile it. There's been an attack on, I use that word again, I should be more careful with choice of my words, but on CRAs. The House Bill 9 was up there, I won't go into a lot of detail about it, but if you can't, chance, look that up. They are hell-bent on eliminating CRAs down the line, and they're putting a lot of things into the, into the bill that you're gonna have, a lot of hoops you're gonna have to jump through to continue to run your CRAs effectively. So that was about it. Looking forward to getting back up there in September. You know, we're open, my offices, and if you come up with a good idea with a bill, Colin, we take your phone calls, Phil. And, you know, it's real crazy to crack the bill, we'll have to get winded here, Mayor, but you just have to come up with an idea, you know, you sit up there as a commissioner and you have come up with an idea. If you get two of your fellow commissioners to agree with you, it becomes a great idea, and you can move forward and get things done. Being in the house up here, there's 120 of us, it's very partisan, make no bones about that, and the minority group sits in the back, and like the obstructed view, you gotta kind of look around so they can watch you up there. But it's frustrating, the frustrating part of being a state rep up there is that when you come up with a great idea and you believe in the passion in your heart, and you know it's a good idea, and it provides a service for all Floridians, and you bring it to the chairmen of these committees that needs to go through, and they don't give you the time of day, or even sometimes a call back, or reasons why they won't hear it. So that's the frustrating part, but like I say, we'll be up there again in September, we'll continue to do it, and like I say, we're open, you come up with an idea, we put it on napkin, we put in draft, and they draft it up, and it makes us look real good. So thank you so much for your time.
Commissioner McCray, you had a comment for?
Yeah, thank you.
Representative Casello?
Representative Casello, yeah, back up there, you know. First of all, I'd like to say that House Bill that you all did, 1221, can you make sure that we get a copy here in the city? Because I'm just saying, I get a lot of calls and concerns about the boats that's out here in the intercoastal, and I got beat up a couple of times by my homeowners association saying, "Can you all do anything?" So since we got something on the books now, the city manager and PD department, at least they have something to go on now, you know, record saying that we could do more than what we was able to do. I also like to say that you are, thank you for your demeanor tonight. It has changed 160 degrees when you was here with us, I'm just saying, you know, so I want to say thank you, we trained you well here, so now you're representing us well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And we have, do we have Representative Al Jaket here? Or do we have a representative of Representative Al Jaket?
Representative Representative Al Jaket.
Okay.
Mayor Grant, to the entire commission and staff, thank you for having us today. The representative fell behind schedule, we're providing, I'm sorry, we're providing, we were doing a number of legislative updates today. He's on his way down this way from Mangonia Park. But briefly, I just wanted to let you guys know, we're setting up a satellite office at the town hall over in Mangonia Park, and we're gonna be setting up a office here in Boynton Beach. I left my contact information here for the staff or constituents to reach out to us via email, and we have personal contact information on there, such as our cellphone number.
We do need your name, though, for the record.
I'm sorry?
Your name for the record?
Kezna Altheus, Legislative Aid to Representative Al Jaket.
And I appreciate it, Kezna.
District 88.
All right, well, thank you so much, and we will leave his space open for when he returns.
Very good, thank you.
Mayor, before he leaves, excuse me, I'd just like to say, you know, it's nice to hear and have some representation down here, because in Boynton, I'm one of the representatives here, and I thought you all had forgotten us. I'm glad to see that you all are trying to do something for the city of Boynton, you know, and I'm glad that you all are showing up tonight, although he's not here, because everybody's asked me, said, "What happened to our representative?" And I've been having the same questions as well. Is he doing anything for Boynton? That's my concern, and I would deal with it with him one-on-one.
Very good, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have a quarterly update by Laura Landsberg, Marketing Manager, about the city's census marketing efforts over the past quarter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Laura Landsberg, Marketing Manager, City of Boynton Beach. I'm here to provide an update on the marketing efforts that we've been doing since April, really, we started April 1st for the census. $1,600 is the amount of money that the city of Boynton Beach will receive for every person counted in the 2020 census over a 10-year period. So that's why we're putting a lot of effort into the marketing for the census, even starting now, because we don't want to miss out on even just one person, we want to reach as many people as we can. Helping us with our efforts, we are partnering with Palm Beach County, as well as the U.S. Census Bureau. We are tapping into the resources that they have, as well as incorporating their logos on as much of our marketing materials as we can. Here's an example of a flyer that we put together that we've been using at local marketing events. I have some over here in the back that anyone can pick up. So far, since April, we have accomplished a lot. We've attended several national and local meetings listed up there, including webinars and meetings with Palm Beach County. We also have met internally, every month, with the census team, which is comprised of staff members from each of the city departments. We, as I mentioned, we printed a flyer, and we've been distributing it locally at city facilities, as well as different events that we've attended. So far, we've been at five over the last several months. We also have done, here we go, sorry, we've included a logo on a lot of marketing materials, including the water quality report, and, here we go, sorry about that. Fun Fair Magazine, we put ads in, the Senior Center has a quarterly newsletter that we put the census material in, as well as envelope, the envelope from City Hall, to the left of the stamp, there's an area that we've included the logo. The goal is to include the census logo in as much as we can from now until Census Day, which is April 1st, 2020. The more people see it, the more they'll get to thinking about it and putting it at front of mind, because again, it's so important that everybody responds. We have also been working as a team on creating lists that we can then use to go out into the community and make sure that we're tapping into all segments of the community. An example is, we have targeted the hard-to-count areas from the last census, and we're working on building a list of all the businesses in that area that we can reach out to. We also are working, again, as a team... We also are working, again, as a team, that we're all gonna take ownership of at least 10 organizations that we can then, within our team, go out and involve with helping us reach out to the community. The next steps are really going to be working to create that Complete Count Committee, which basically is, I'll get to that on the next slide, but it's basically compiling a lot of community leaders within the community who can help us reach our efforts, and again, I'll get to that. We also will be doing door builds on I-95, we'll be doing direct mail on the utility inserts in February, right before the actual Census Day. We're looking on the census video that we can share on social media, as well as door hangers and postcards that we can bring to the different events and utilize in certain areas, especially the hard-to-count areas. We're going to be doing social media giveaways, as well as coming up with some themed workshops. For example, in September, it's Baby Safety Month, so we're gonna put together a workshop that is targeted towards one of the biggest groups that don't respond to the census, which is children. So, we're trying to tap into themed workshops that will address those segments of the population. In addition, the Senior Center, we are going to be at a workshop there, talking about the census. There will be an ASL interpreter there as well. And six months before Census Day, on October 1st, we'll be doing a Facebook Live, which the community can ask questions, and we will have an ASL interpreter there as well. As I adjust briefly, the Complete Count Committee is gonna be a key component to our marketing efforts. We want to involve as many community groups and organizations as possible to help us get the word out. That includes examples such as schools, and the Palm Beach County School Board is doing, is part of the Palm Beach County effort as well, so we're really honing in on preschools, charter schools, that aren't gonna be captured by that effort, as well as, we're gonna work with the chamber, we're reaching after realtors, smaller groups, churches, all those different organizations, and trying to get them to help us communicate the message. The Complete Count Committee is going to help us communicate how important it is that people respond to the census and help be that trusted voice within the community, that the people who belong to the organizations will really trust and follow their lead. They'll hopefully help motivate the households to respond, and really, at the end of the day, help increase the city's response rate, which will translate into more money for the city. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, you're welcome.
Our next announcement is for the City of Boynton Beach's 4th of July event by Eleanor Crissell, Public Communications and Marketing Director.
Eleanor Crissell, Public Communications and Marketing Director, thank you, Mayor. It's getting close, and we're getting excited. Our 4th of July will be right here in this facility on July 4th. The hours, as you see up there, are 6:30 to 9:30, and this year's event has changed a little to focus on our coastal community, so all our activities will be facing our waterfront, which we're excited about, so the event will be a little bit more compact. One of the most thrilling things that we're having to start the event will be hydroflight, if you've never seen one, and John's gonna show you one, I think, in the air, starting our event, and, there we go. So, at 6:30, we'll have this going on, along with the main stage area music at the same time. We'll have five food trucks, including Troy's, Gastro Geeks, Annabelle's Treats, and et cetera. We also are gonna theme all of the activities for children and coastal-themed community events with their engagement with their families. So, instead of having a rock climbing where a child will just go up the rock climbing by itself and stand in line for an hour, all the activities are under the large pavilion, and will include art-oriented and community engagement activities that a child could take things home with. For instance, we're working with Debbie Majors on one of our special needs community businesses, microenterprises, that will be providing opportunities for our children to paint little canvases of fish and take them with them when they go. We're having a little fishing pond where children can get a little magnet fish out, and they win a prize that they can take. So, we've tried to center the entire event around our coastal community, which we're, of course, is one of our number-one amenities. At the end of the evening, you'll have your spectacular fireworks show by Zambelli International. It is one of the largest fireworks shows in Palm Beach County, so we're very proud of that. And in between the show, right before it, we'll also have another demonstration of the hydroflights. Just wanna make sure and see if the mayor would like to go up and do that at the beginning.
Seeking volunteers for hydroplanes.
Seeking volunteers to do that.
Absolutely.
I volunteer.
According to Rich, you just gotta sign a waiver, and we'll get you up here.
I got two kids.
Do we have insurance?
My kids.
Yeah, we do.
Do you need insurance? Yeah, you need insurance. I also wanna focus on one thing that we, we know that parking is limited here, so what we've done is we increased our buses. We have three more buses that we're providing, and we have two new locations. So, we'll have a location picking up at City Hall and Quantum Park, 260 spaces there. We encourage everyone to get on the air-conditioned bus, come here, drop off, and Journey Church, which is on our south end, and from our evaluation last year, that was one of the areas that we were not servicing. So, we're hopeful, and that has 160, I believe, so we're hopeful for that. We've also had a ride share that we've created at the Shell Station, so we encourage you to take Uber, Lyft, whatever you, you like, and drop off right there. We want you to follow us on Facebook and Twitter, and pick up a postcard on your way out. Any questions?
Yes, so, will there be enough chairs, or should people bring chairs, umbrellas?
Chairs, blankets, we encourage all of that. We are having benches this year, we're gonna have little round tables with umbrellas in the middle, and, so we have a little bit more seating this year than we had in the past.
Wonderful.
Yep. Looking forward to it, so I hope all of you will attend.
Yes.
Thank you.
Our next is announce the budget workshops for 2019-20 proposed budget. The workshops are at Intracoastal Park Clubhouse, Monday, July 15, 2019, at 5:00 p.m., Tuesday, July 16, 2019, at 10:00 a.m., Wednesday, July 17, 2019, at 2:00 p.m., if needed. Next, announce the initial participants in the City of Boynton Beach Pilot Green Business Recognition Program by Rebecca Harvey, Sustainability Coordinator.
Good evening, Rebecca Harvey, Sustainability Coordinator. I came before you all in March to announce the launch of our Pilot Green Business Recognition Program, and I have the pleasure tonight of announcing the first four restaurants to be certified as City of Boynton Beach Green Businesses. To refresh your memory about the program a little bit, it strikes a balance between structure and flexibility. To be certified, restaurants must complete four required actions and at least five voluntary actions within the categories of waste reduction and recycling, energy and water conservation, and general green business practices. The required actions that they must do are to use at least one recycling service, to develop a policy to only distribute plastic straws, and take out plastic utensils upon request, to complete an online plastic footprint calculator, and a litter control checklist, and share those results with us. And then after completing their application, staff visits the site to verify and document that they've met their commitments, upon which they will receive a City of Boynton Beach Green Business window decal, which we've shared with the certified restaurants, and they are recognized on the Go Green Boynton Beach website. The green business link is on gogreenboyntonbeach.com. They're recognized on the city's social media platforms, and we've also been promoting the event at recent, I'm sorry, promoting the program and the participants at recent events, including our Earth Day event, the Hurricane Expos, and the Rock the Marina and Lionfish Derby. So, without further ado, let me announce the four initial City of Boynton Beach certified green businesses, which are Del Sol Bakery, Driftwood, Bonvenuto, and Onzo Mediterranean Kitchen, formerly known as The Chickpea, they changed their name on June 1st. So, I invite all of the community to please patronize these restaurants and thank them for taking efforts to become more sustainable. And I'll add one additional comment, just general comment, is that the program is going well, the flexibility that we've built into it seems to be a good model so far. I'm noticing there's a lot of one-on-one visits and back and forth, and just working individually with these business owners on the specific issues and challenges that they have. So, the pilot program has a lot of flexibility, which allows, allows for customization to their needs. And I do have postcards here. Feel free to take one and share it with your favorite business.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we go on to our proclamations.
Mayor.
Yes.
Just a point of information, Senator Berman has a rap.
Do you mind if we finish the proclamations, and then we'll bring you back up? Thank you. So, our first proclamation is for Lifeguard Appreciation Day. Do we have any lifeguards here?
Yes.
Hi, Crystal. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas the number-one cause of drowning in both Palm Beach County and the U.S. is unsupervised water activity, lifeguards play an invaluable role in drowning prevention and water safety through their specialized training to identify persons in distress in the water and provide first responder help. Whereas most drownings occur at unguarded sites, according to the Center for Disease Control Injury Center, if a lifeguard is present, the chance of a drowning at a beach is less than one, than less, less than on in one in 18 million per year, as reported by the United States Living Association, Lifesaving Association. Whereas lifeguard surveillance is essential to a swimming facility's risk management program, by enforcing the rules and monitoring patrons' actions can be taken to prevent or minimize aquatic injuries. Whereas lifeguards certified as water safety instructors are trained to provide comprehensive swim instruction to all age groups. Participating in formal swim lessons reduces the risk of drowning among children aged one to four years, the population with the highest drowning rates. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 21st day of June 2019 as Lifeguard Appreciation Day.
Thank you, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. Willie Majors, Recreation and Parks Director, I wanted to introduce to you our Aquatic Supervisor, Crystal Casada, and allow her to receive the proclamation from the mayor, but I also wanted to take this opportunity real quick to let you know that, among other things, Crystal is not only a certified lifeguard, and as you can imagine, a lifeguard not only has to swim very well, but also has to be somewhat of a brave person, considering the things that they may have to do in case of an emergency. To become a lifeguard, you have to be trained by what is referred to as a water safety instructor. And a water safety instructor obviously has to have the skills, not only of a lifeguard, but also the ability to train those people who wanna become a lifeguard. Take it a step up, Crystal is a certified water safety instructor trainer, so she's capable of training people to train lifeguards, and for that, we are very appreciative, because that really means that she's very, very capable of not only being a lifeguard, but also to then instruct those people that wanna train people to be lifeguards. So, I think that really requires an extra level of kudos, and so I'm very proud that she's a member of our team. And I'm gonna let Crystal tell you a little bit about some of our programs that we offer at the pool, very, very quickly.
Do you picture first?
Yeah.
Briefly, my name's Crystal Casada, Aquatic Supervisor. I'm very proud to be working for City of Boynton Beach. We do offer swim lessons ages six months to 12 months. I am proud to say that June and mostly of July is already full. We do have opening in August. We also received a $5,000 grant, which provided 125 swim lessons to the community for free, eight classes, 30 minutes each class. Still have swim lessons, we have water aerobics, which I highly recommend to everyone, it's a great class. I offer it twice a day, nine in the morning at 5:15, Tuesday through Saturday at nine, and Tuesday through Friday at 5:15. And then, we also have 10 junior lifeguards this year, and they are rocking it this summer. I say that they are all amazing kids, and they are definitely helping. It's more of an internship, they're learning timesheets, to opening and closing chemicals, lifeguarding, backboarding CPR, first aid, AED, they're getting certified in it, they're also gonna get a certificate for being junior lifeguards as well. So, I'm really proud of our pool, and I hope you guys can come and visit sometime.
I just wanna share a quick story of just how dedicated this young woman is to her job and to making sure she serves the community. I remember I was giving, I was attending the John Denson Pool with my sons and making sure that they learn water safety and learning how to swim, and she was asking me to teach her the Creole word for bathing suit, because she had to make sure she explained to the parents, you know, what was needed and what are the different things they have to have when they're coming for lessons, and she spent all day repeating the word over and over and over, and she actually called me months later to tell me, I used it, and they understood me! And I was just so proud of her, and just to know her level of dedication to our community and to making sure that, you know, language barrier or not, she's gonna be there to make sure that the service and the help is provided. So, thank you so much for everything that you're doing.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for your help.
Anytime.
Now, what is the word for bathing suit in Creole?
Sean Dub, Sean Duban?
Don't blink now.
Sean Duban?
There you go, bravo! Any other questions?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is June as Pride Month, with the following people come to the podium to accept the proclamation. Alan Hendricks from Equality Florida, Julie Seaver, Compass Gay Lesbian Community Center Lake Worth, Meredith Ockman, Palm Beach County National Organization for Women, Nicholas Capello, Florida LGBT Democratic Caucus, and Daniel Stone, Council Member from the town of Haverhill. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community is comprised of people from all walks of life who are active participants in our community, and whereas members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community are engaged in endeavors of economic growth, retail, education, hospitality, community, professional, and service industries, and whereas the City of Boynton Beach has a proud history of striving for equal opportunity for all of its residents and employees, and whereas people seeking to limit any rights of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community are in conflict with the city's policies and anti-discrimination ordinances. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of June 2019 as LGBTQ Pride Month.
Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, city staff, fellow residents, thank you. I'm quite proud to be a member of this community and a member of this city. We celebrate pride, especially this year, because it's the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall Riots in North, and where was it, New York? Fifty years ago, the LGBT community decided that they were no longer going to stand for institutionalized discrimination against their community, and they rioted for three days against the New York City Police Department, that's pretty impressive. Since that time, since that time, we've made great, great strides towards equality for all. We've shed a good bit of blood. We still have a good way to go, it's still legal to fire somebody in the great state of Florida for being gay, but we've made great progress, and I truly appreciate my city and the other cities in Palm Beach County, Broward, Gade, Orange County, Pinellas County, you know, Alachua for Broward's sake, that have stood up and said, in this city, we honor all people, everybody, we serve everybody, everybody gets a fair shake, and we honor and respect everybody in our city. So, we'd like to say thank you, I'd like to say thank you from the entire community to the city for this proclamation. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It was stated I am accepting the proclamation as a councilman, but I'm actually here in a different capacity, so I'd like your record to show. I am the Vice President for Floridians for Equality and Justice Coalition. We are an organization that is leading the effort towards ratifying the Equal Rights Amendment for the Florida to be the 38th state, and leading the way to make sure that we pass the Competitive Workforce Act, which I saw your city manager nodding her head. It is indeed legal in the state of Florida to fire and openly say to an employee, "You're gay. I'm going to need to follow you." And so unfortunately, we're one of 11 states that, there's a little bit more, but one of 11 states that actually have that in effect and practice it daily. I want to thank you as an openly LGBT elected official, one of five in this county, for recognizing the existence of LGBT people. You know, it seems every single day that we add another letter onto LGBTQ. And the reason for that is just because we are a community, we are a world of different people, and that's okay. And so what you've done, Mayor, today by placing your name and signature on a proclamation recognizing all different groups of people is say that we exist, we care about you, and we love you. And so I wish more cities would be just like you across our state. Many are stepping up to the plate, and you've added your name to that list again today. So on behalf of the organization I represent, and as an openly LGBT leader who strives to get more LGBT individuals elected to office, I say thank you.[710.12][710.12](applause)
And speaking on behalf of, I guess, Julie Seaver, is that Compass is holding their annual Stonewall Ball over at the Harriet Himmel this Saturday. They have from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. a VIP, and then from 9:00 o'clock on, a dance party. So you can go to Compass's website to purchase tickets, and me and my wife look forward to seeing everyone who makes it out there. And our last proclamation is for National HIV Testing Day. Do we have a representative from Found Care? Wonderful. So City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas in the United States, over 1 million people are living with HIV, and every 13 minutes, a new infection occurs yielding more than 40,000 annual new HIV infections. And whereas in Florida, more than 116,900 people are living with HIV, and more than 13 new infections occur daily, and 1 in 8 HIV-infected individuals don't know that they're infected. And whereas in Palm Beach County, more than 8,400 people or 1 in 170 residents are living with HIV. And whereas significant new and highly advanced treatments deliver hope and enhance the quality of life for those who are affected, those considerable achievements can only help individuals if they know their HIV status and are linked into life-saving medical care. And whereas this year marks the 25th Annual Observance of National HIV Testing Day on June 27, and the Palm Beach County HIV Community Prevention Partnership and the Palm Beach County HIV Care Council, through its partners, are working together to provide HIV testing throughout Palm Beach County during the week surrounding National HIV Testing Day, June 23rd to the 29th, 2019. And now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 27th of June 2019 as National HIV Testing Day, and urge all residents of the City of Boynton Beach to take the HIV test to know their status and to take part in other activities and observances designed to increase awareness and understanding
Thank you. On behalf of Found Care and our CEO-elect Berman, we would like to thank the mayor and the commissioners and other officials. I would like to read Found Care's mission, statement, and history. Found Care's mission is to fulfill unmet health care and social services needs for individuals and families in Palm Beach County. Found Care operates on a federal quality community health center dedicated to expanding access to affordable medical care to Palm Beach County residents. Found Care Incorporated provides services to many different populations through our services centers located in Belgrade, Delray Beach, North Palm Beach, and West Palm Beach. Found Care Incorporated provides the following services to its clients: primary medical care, direct emergency financial assistance, nurse care coordination, housing assistance, and referrals, treatment and education, food program, outreach and referral, primary medical care, medical case management, and medical transportation, and health care insurance. Now I'm going to let my coworker read our prevention mission statement.
Can we get your names for the record?
My name is, this is Sheila Evans.
I'm sorry. My name is Sheila Evans, and I am a peer navigator at Found Care.
Thank you.
My name is Quentin Dames. I'm a testing and linkage coordinator at Found Care. The prevention department's mission is to provide and promote education, advocacy, and compassion to individuals and families infected and affected by HIV and AIDS in Palm Beach County. We provide free confidential rapid HIV antibody testing and counseling services at our Belgrade, Delray Beach, and West Palm Beach offices, as well as a variety of agencies and businesses throughout Palm Beach County, such as at substance abuse centers, soup kitchens, recreational centers, transitional housing programs, university campuses, community centers, and churches. And we also have outreach and education, HIV and HCV rapid testing, preventative medications such as PrEP and PEP, linkage programs, volunteer opportunities, and our drop-in center. Thank you very much.[1028.54][1028.54](applause)
We have some brochures if anybody is interested in any of our services. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you, Quentin. Before you leave, are you related to the Dames in Boynton?
That's us.[1044.25][1044.25](laughter)
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to take a moment of privilege and just kind of speak on this proclamation. Being Haitian-American, HIV is something that kind of, I would say, is more like a little bit of PTSD for some in our community, especially back in the 80s when it seemed as if Haitians were almost unanimously blamed for this disease. But thank God, you know, we have progressed and we have moved forward in time, and now people understand that this is not a disease that's transmitted by gay people, it's not a disease that's transmitted by black or African or Haitian people. This is a disease that can affect any and every single person who potentially has unprotected sex with somebody who's infected. So I want to thank you, first of all, Mayor, for making this proclamation. I want to thank Found Care for the work, the continuous work that you all do to keep the public educated and really help individuals find the help they need to help treat and live healthier lives with this disease. So again, you know, it's always about how we educate ourselves and understanding the past. That way, we can be better and move ourselves forward in the future. Thank you very much.
For that, now we'll go back to our Senator for Boynton Beach, Lori Berman, for her post-legislative update.
Good evening, and I apologize for being late. There was some mess up, cross up. Okay, so I know that your former colleague, Joe Casello, did a little bit of an update. So what I like to focus on is the preemption bills that were passed so that you know the areas that you can't have passed legislation in. And unfortunately, as in many other years, there was a fair amount of preemption this year. Home rule continues to be attacked in Tallahassee, not by any of us from our delegation, but unfortunately, you know, that continues to happen. So one of the first things was vegetable gardens. You cannot prohibit someone from having a vegetable garden in their front yard. That was as a result of a suit in Miami Gardens. HOAs can continue to prohibit people from having vegetable gardens, but a city cannot. Another thing that was done had to do with tree trimming. If somebody gets a certificate from the Arbicultural Society saying that the tree is a danger to other, to people, or in danger of falling down, then the homeowner can trim that tree, can remove that tree, can pretty much do anything they want with that tree, and you can't have any impact upon that, including if they want to remove it, you can't require replacement of that tree. Micromobility, which is scooters. You may have seen some, I don't know if you have many in your town, but you've probably seen some in Fort Lauderdale, you might have seen some in West Palm Beach. The scooters that people get with an app and they just drop them down wherever they're done using them. The state did look into preempting that issue, but we chose not to do that, and instead, what they did was just regulate them a little bit and say, "If there's a storm coming, the company needs to come in and pick up all the scooters. You can't require a driver's license for renting one of the scooters," a few other little things like that. But my advice to you as a city commission is if you are thinking you want to regulate those scooters, now would be the time to do it.
We've already done that.
Oh, okay. Well, then you're in great shape. You're way ahead of the curve of all my cities. So that's great, because I'm hoping that in the event that it happens, there will be some grandfathering in, and you will be able to do that. And when I first started doing this, I would have had to tell you that you can't regulate plastic straws, but the governor vetoed that bill, so now if you want to have a plastic straw regulation, you are welcome to go ahead and do that. There were some other preemption bills, one having to do with small cell preemption, which is the 5G network. So it will be pretty hard for you to regulate much having to do with 5G network the way the bill was written. If you do choose to pass an ordinance on something that has been preempted, and there is a challenge to it, and you don't drop the ordinance within 30 days of receiving the notice, you could be liable for attorney's fees in a court suit. So that's a pretty significant item that we've done. There was one particular preemption bill, which I really do like, that we did do, and that had to do with our colleague here, and your former colleague, the firefighter cancer presumption bill. And I'm really proud that we passed this in the legislation, thanks also to Matt Willhite from our delegation, who was a really strong sponsor of the bill. There's been a pretty good correlation between firefighters and certain cancers, and under this bill, they will, people who, firefighters who have cancer treat, will get more cancer treatment at no cost, get one-time cash payouts of $25,000. So it's a really good bill because these are people who protect us and then put themselves in harm's way, and we need to make sure that we protect them after they put themselves in harm's way for ours, for us. As you know, we passed a $91 billion budget. This week, the governor has the budget on his desk, and we anticipate that there will be quite a few vetoes. So it'll be interesting to see. Everybody's sort of on bated breath right now trying to figure out what's going on. And I always like to, I always nominate a bill every year for most trivial or frivolous bill, and my nomination for this year's most frivolous bill was a bill that says, "If you buy a lottery ticket, it has to say on the ticket itself, 'Warning: Gambling can be addictive.'"[1443.33][1443.33](laughter) So that's pretty much the summary of this session. I'm really happy to represent all of you. My office is at I-95 and Gateway in the beautiful city of Boynton Beach, and I'm always happy to have any of you come visit us if you have any constituent issues, and I'm happy to answer any questions before my colleague, Representative Jaket, also is here.
Yes. Thank you. Senator Berman, I'm glad you brought up about the scooters, and you said Broward County, because Sun Sentinel this week had a map, and it's stated on there, and it showed all of the accidents that happened from the use of these scooters. And if you have not looked at it, Boynton, please look at it before we do anything else. I'm just saying, they're very dangerous, and I'm just saying, we need to, you know, be cognizant of what we pass and don't pass in this city. Thank you.
I agree, and they don't, there's no requirement to wear any kind of a helmet, so if somebody falls off, it's really a big concern.
Any other questions from the board? If you have none, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I do apologize, and thank you, friends and neighbors, and thank you, Commissioner and Mayor.
Representative Jaket, would you mind taking the podium and providing us with your post-legislative update?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, good evening to all our residents in Boynton Beach. And Mr. Mayor, congratulations on your reelection, sir, and it's a testament to the work that you've done. Congratulations to our newest member of the Boynton Beach City Commission. And so from what I've heard so far from the communities I represent, you have reached out, and I can tell you, in Boynton Beach, that's one of the things that really, really counts. So welcome aboard, and I look forward to working with you. And to the reelection of my very good friend, Commissioner Christina Romulus, congratulations to you and the hard work that you've done. And I can tell you, not only the folks that we all grew up with are proud of you, the children who are growing up here especially, and the young women that I know, Ms. Barbara Munters in my law office, you are the name that they all look up to, and so thank you for choosing to do the work that you do. And so as my colleagues have spoken, Representative Casello, Senator reelection.
Yeah, our Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor was reelec- oh, yeah? Oh, on the, well, you know.[1602.11][1602.11](laughter)
Yeah, you'd be two people.
You know what was going on during that thing? Congratulations. That means there is no doubt in my mind.[1611.21][1611.21](laughter) I didn't even consider you being in an election, Commissioner Katson, who would think such a thing. But, you know, your former colleague will tell you during that time, while you all were fighting to make sure that you served this community, we were up there fighting to make sure that we protect this community in the ways that we had the opportunity to have there. With the schools issues, you know, someone said, "Only a politician who's lost his or her mind would give teachers guns in schools." And so as you can tell, Tallahassee has lost its mind because the priority for them up in Tallahassee, because of the deaths that we're experiencing, it's pretty troubling for me particularly because my district is unique. That's why I respect all my colleagues up there, whether they're from the Panhandle, Miami Dade, or my neighbors in Palm Beach County. But we all have unique districts. My district encompasses Delray Beach, Boynton Beach, Lantana, Lake Worth, West Palm Beach, Revere Beach, Mangona Park, Lake Park. It's a very stretched-out district that skirts about two blocks around Lake Worth just to keep, I don't know, maybe just to give me the bell exactly, I don't know what it was for, but you know, they pack whatever they wanted to pack in that district. And so there are specific needs that District 88 has, as you in Boynton Beach know very well. Most of my district run right through District 3 and District 2. And so the issues that I mostly focus on, as a kid who came here at the age of nine to Delray Beach, from immigrant parents, was born in St. Martin. We were deported when I was a year and a half old, went to Haiti. And so while they were trying to come over here, the land of milk and honey, the place where mom said, "Son, if we get you there, we don't need to give you anything else because you have the opportunity to make anything of yourself." Four or five kids, the first to go to college, and now practicing attorney, having had the chance to serve in your capacity with the city of Delray Beach. For me, my focus, just someone who grew up here and got the opportunities to go to Bangin' Creek Elementary School, Boca Middle, Atlantic High School's IB program, played sports.
IP program?
The opportunities I have, I wanted to provide it to this district. So my focus may not be the same focus as every legislator, because we're all not experts in the same thing. My passion in the legislature is economics. My passion is economic development, tax policies. Because see, if we're trying to make sure that we're making our schools better, I wish our Vice Mayor Kat, if we're trying to make sure we're saving lives in our community because crime rate is too high, but instead of addressing the problem at the roots, we as elected officials get caught up by the hype. hype sensationalism, and we just want to throw money behind the problems and assume that that will pacify the people, because we did something. I'm here to tell you, the monies that we have increased as far as funding for our schools over the last 30 years has not produced better results. Are we funding our public schools properly? No, we're underfunding it. They do need more funding, but has the increases we've given them in the past produced better? No. Is hiring more police officers solving the crimes in our communities? What we need to do is focus on issues that really matter. For example, if Mom and Dad doesn't have to do two or three jobs, guess what? Any teacher will tell you, what is the number-one factor to student achievement? Parental involvement. My mother doesn't read and write. She was there at Bangion Creek. She was there at Boca Middle when I was playing the French horn. She was there at Atlantic at my wrestling matches and football games. And she'd say, "I don't know what, I see you all jumping on each other, I'm just looking for my baby," that's all, but she was there. And I cannot discredit that. That's the number-one factor to why I achieved and excelled so well in school. And so, if Mom can be home, if we can raise the wage and make sure every family is receiving $15 minimum per hour, that means they don't have to leave the house more, and Little Johnny and Little Al don't have to roam the streets in the afternoon. If we can make sure we continue to lower business rent tax for our small businesses, then we can make sure that hairdresser can actually hire somebody. Small business is the backbone of our economy. Who wants to argue that? And so, when we continue to make these economic policies, I truly believe, Commissioners, your focus in your particular area, you will see a change. So forget trickle-down economics, let's trickle-up. Let's put the money in the pockets of the people and watch how better our communities get. See, instead of taking away the poison that is killing the young men and women in my district, in my community, see, that's addressing the roots. That's not what we want to do. We want to trim the leaves. So we'll put more guns into schools, because now that will stop the killings. It doesn't stop the killings on Seacrest, Commissioners, it doesn't stop the killings on Tamarind, and it doesn't stop any killings that may happen in the northwest, southwest communities, because most of them, all 160 somewhat in 2016, did not happen in a school. So what did we do? Window dressing, that's what it is. The feel-good, and we all applaud, and we go home. And I hear on the news again, another young man in my district, because we're afraid to ban those weapons. And so, while we did very well as far as funding certain projects, while we did very well as far as taking care of Hurricane Michael folks, while we made a great effort as far as Sodowsky and affordable housing, we fell short in taking care of the little people. We fell short. And I must add, as an elected official, I am disappointed when we stand quiet for any business tax reduction, and yet anytime someone proposes a tax reduction for the residents, we all say that we're bankrupt. We have to remember that these people are the ones who pay our salaries, the roads, everything else. And if one time we can find a place, which I know is tough to do in our city budgets especially, find a place to save them, the quality of life actually goes up. It's not bringing more guns into schools or hiring more people, it's really empowering the parents and the students. So I don't even want to talk about Amendment 4, because it was shameful, what was done. A large majority of people voted, and the legislator, the legislature specifically, the sponsor of that bill stood up and said, "The people were too dumb, they didn't know what they voted for." He got up and said that the people were misled, and the, and the language was not clear, they did not know. More people voted for that amendment than did for Rick Scott, than did for our governor, for anyone who was in the election. But yet, we had the audacity to come back, those of us who won by thirty, with 35%, maybe. We had the audacity to come back and say, "We know better than the people." And so, as an attorney, as a legislator, I was disappointed. Again, we don't want to get into that, because first of all, there's no nexus between the crimes and that right. I give people this example.
Representative Jaket, do you mind telling everybody what Amendment 4 is?
Thank you, Mayor. Amendment 4 is the proposal that was on the ballot in 2018, that gave automatic voting rights back to our returning citizens. Folks who had been charged or convicted or pled guilty to a felony, see, their voting rights were stolen away because of that. See, some of you are like, "What do you mean stolen away?" Well, what gives you the right to take someone's voting rights away because of a felony? Because they're a bad guy, right? So why don't you take away their rights to get married? Why don't you take away their rights to practice their religion, their freedom of speech? As a matter of fact, if you've murdered three women, why haven't you lost your right to get married? Look up the history of voting rights in America, you'll know exactly why. And so, let's not mess with that. There's a reason that right is fundamental, there's a reason we have it, and what we've done is carved out policies that will allow us to still control political platforms and still control whatever we want to control. So Amendment 4 passed overwhelmingly, but the legislature decided to add their own language and say, "By saying 'complete all terms,' including your incarceration, probation, and parole, by saying 'all terms,' we will now interpret that to mean that all fines, fees, and restitution." The person you owe can choose to allow you to work it off, I guess in the fields, or they can, you know, allow, you know, tell you, "You have to pay it." In South Florida, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I think we are over $1.3 billion in fines and fees. Many of those people will never buy back their right to vote. And so, with that, I don't want to take more time, I know you've probably got an extended agenda, we were just in there going apart, giving a presentation, and I want to thank you for your, for your time and for your service, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Commissioner McCray?
Call me first?
Oh, yeah.
I have nothing to say, except I'm glad to see you.
Come on, Commissioner McCray, you've got something to say.
I do have something to say. I'm glad to see you here representing Boynton, because Boynton, the citizens that you represent, they were saying, "What happened to our state representative?" And I'm glad to see you here tonight, because there's a lot of things. We invited you to and for, you was not present, and they was telling me what's wrong. So I'm glad to see you here tonight, that's all I need to say, sir.
And thank you, Commissioner, it's always nice to see you, and I can tell you, a lot of those residents, and especially at, at Izette Hester Park, that I frequent very, very much, soccer on Sundays and everything, I can tell a lot of those residents around your district probably get tired of seeing me, but, and, and a lot of your colleagues too, I do see sometimes in Tallahassee, we do speak. So I'll tell you, you and I, I think, should speak more often, that's what we will do.
We should, you have my phone number, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Jaket, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Is there any other announcements from the board? Seeing none, we're moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations, please state your name and address for the record before you begin.
Minister Bernard Wright, President of All Right Ministries, Real Talk Radio, and the Robbie Wells Foundation, good evening, everyone on the dais, everyone here in their respective places, God bless all of you all. I'd like to enter to you, the mayor, I'd like you to have a copy of this, we've gone over this before.
Give it to Collins.
Okay. Now, along with this, there you go, along with this, you found a petition that was presented to you in 2016, before this dais. A couple of you all weren't here, Mr. Katz, Commissioner Romulus, you weren't here, but at any rate, this goes on from 2014, 15, before former Mayor Taylor about the Dinsen Pool, and as much as I appreciate, you know, dedicating a day to lifeguard's day, I was a swimmer, God knows we need to know how to swim. I want to thank everybody in here, the staff who have done and is doing anything within, you know, regarding the betterment of Boynton Beach, and that's what I'm about. I'm in a prophetic spirit of better Boynton, I am an advocate for my community in District 2, I love my people, I love my, my district, I love my city, I'm historic in that respect. However, my great-grandfather have a legacy, and this is a legacy that you just have right now, where we, the people, we petitioned for this Dinsen Pool for hours, and the fee that was charging children a dollar. You all came to an agreement in August 2016, y'all came to an agreement, and this was from, this is our two-city manager, by way of Colin Groff, from Wally Majors, and had to do with the Dinsen Pool and its schedule. And this is what you all resolved, and that was from the summer to June, August, while children are at school, it was from Tuesday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., fall and spring, September, October, November, March, April and May, Tuesday through Friday, 2:30 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Winter time, pool closed, except for lessons and swim team. It says consequently, staff recommends that during the months of December and January, the pool be used exclusively for swim lessons and swim team practices. Now, however, just the other day, I ran into a problem, because I was instrumental in getting this done. I went for about four years, three years, Commissioner McCray, you was there with this, we all agreed to this, after, thank God for Mayor Steve Grant coming into office, by the grace of God, and we settled this. This is what it was. Now, the other day, on June the 7th, I walked out there from an incident happening on June the 6th, and I witnessed that they were reducing the hour, from 5:00 to 4:00. Well, here you see that they took it up from 4:30 to 5:00, and went down from 1:00 to 10:00 in the mornings. So now, we do want stability, we don't want arbitrariness, we don't want contrariness, nor someone being sovereign, having someone to say over a commission action, does anyone in this community, on this staff, have the sovereign solitary decision to make a decision over a commission action? And that's what this is about, because they have changed the hours from 5:00 to 4:00.
The answer is yes.
5:00 to 4:00.
Yeah, they have that ability, so thank you.
Did you change it without your?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then when you all took something, we don't know.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to, yep?
One comment, actually. Good evening, Brian Fitzpatrick, 409 Northeast First Street. I wanted to talk to you tonight about term limits, and, you know, it's kind of an exciting time here in Boynton Beach, you know, we're making some progress, Town Hall is moving along. Unfortunately, you know, the heart of Boynton, I still say in my lifetime, and what I'm asking, I think there's a lot of public interest out there to abolish term limits. We have a commission that's up here that's working together for the betterment of the entire city, and I think abolishing term limits would go a long way in maintaining the continuity that we have right now and maintaining the progress. So I'm asking you to put that on the ballot, let the people decide. Thank you very much, have a good night.
There anyone else for public audience? Please stand up now if you wish to speak. Seeing none, moving on to administrative. We have advisory board appointments, our first one is for the Arts Commission, Commissioner McCray?
Ryan Pasquale.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, motion passes unanimously. Then the Library Board, Commissioner Pensilva, you have the regular nomination?
Yes, George Feldman.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, motion passes unanimously. Planning and Development, Commissioner Romulus?
Hemlich.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, motion passes unanimously. So the next one is authorize the mayor to travel to Ferindola, Italy, in an official capacity. Similar to my previous international trips, I'd like to represent the city, and according to the rules, I'd like the city's commission for me to be able to hold my position overseas as well.
Mayor, just from my own understanding, will you be signing any documents or entering into any agreements on this trip?
I will not sign any documents on this trip without the commission approval. I will be, I may bring back a document to sign for the commission of creating a new city's relationship with Ferindola. For a little bit of information about Ferindola, it is a, an Italian town 100 miles northeast of Rome. They have a very big international arts festival in July, and one of our artists was selected to be part of that festival. And we already have an ambassador from our sister cities there now, and I feel that this is a great way for our community to learn more about other communities throughout the world, and we can help exchange ideas about our art, art in public places and use, and learn more about their art in public places. So may I have a motion to approve my travel with no city expenditure, funds being expended?
Second.
Question?
Yes. I'd like for somebody to tell me, how many sister cities do we have now in Boynton? Because the first one that we brought here was Shifu, China, that was the one that I took the trip over to, you know, represent the city, and I need to know, how many do we have? And really, are we just gathering sister cities, you know, as, as listing them, or what have we given them from this city, or what are they giving us? I'm just saying, for them to be a sister city. I'm just saying, when I say somebody is my sister, my brother, at least they're helping me, or I'm helping them, I'd like for somebody to.
That is, that's exactly it. So we've had certain art programs, so in 2017, an artist from South Tech won the International Sister Cities Competition. We receive art from all of our sister cities in China, Haiti, and Finland to have for this contest. And the, one of the main things is to broaden the horizons of our residents, to learn about a new sister city. When I was going into the different schools for Reed for the record, telling them about my trip to Finland, you know, they may have not even known where Finland is, or even known that it was a country. You know, the other aspect of Finland, our sister city in Finland, is that it has a shipyard, and it was founded in 1442, and so they've learned how to create their own economic development when times have been getting tough. They had a delegation from Roma come to Boynton Beach, and the city manager will tell you a little bit about the exchange of ideas that they've had. And so, it is an exchange of culture, education, economics, we've been doing this for about 10 years, and I feel that getting an Italian sister city will help improve membership for the sister cities, and to help show that, you know, broaden the horizon of our residents.
Let me, let me say it again another way, I'd like for somebody to get me a list of the names of our sister cities, and the year that we became, you know, friends for our sister cities, for this city, even with this one being another one that will be added on, I need it just to see how many we've taken on, that's all.
Okay, sounds good. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda, would anyone like to pull any of the items from consent agenda?
Second.
All right, well. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over 100,000, motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing, the city commission will conduct these hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. Jim, propose ordinance number 19-018.
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending land use development regulations, Chapter 1, General Administration, Article 2, Definitions, Article 3, Relationship to Comprehensive Plan, and Article 4, Redevelopment Plans, Chapter 3, Zoning, Article 3, Zoning Districts and Overlay Zones, to continue implementation of revisions related to modification of the future land use categories and other recommendations of the Community Redevelopment Plan, including creation of the Cultural District and Boynton Beach Boulevard overlays, and Chapter 4, Site Development Standards, correcting references to overlays providing for conflict, severalability, codification, and an effective date.
Good evening, Amanda Bisseli, Principal Planner with the city. Before you, you have a very broad, um, set of revisions. We categorize them in five different areas. The first we're calling land development cleanups. This is essentially, um, taking care of inconsistencies between our CRA redevelopment plan and our land development code. The next three, um, come out from the CRA plan directly, um, which I will show you soon, but they are essentially updating and creating our overlay areas, including the MLK overlay, the Boynton Beach Boulevard overlay, and the cultural district overlay. And the last addition was, um, we added two, um, additional definitions, which were being used in the CRA plan and now within the code, um, so we cleaned up some of that language also. So the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Plan was adopted in 2016, and as you remember, or as a reminder, um, the last section of that plan is an implementation guide, which helps staff get some of the inconsistencies taken care of and adopted into our code. So what we are working on today, what you have before you, is, um, this item. And you can see there, it covers specifically the adoption and revision of the Ocean Avenue overlay and also the Boynton Beach overlay. So overlays, um, they're different than zoning districts in that they are geographically specific. So a regular zoning district, you can apply C2 or C3 anywhere in the city. An overlay is, um, really almost like a, a planning term to create a district. The three that we're looking at, um, the first one is the MLK overlay, which already exists, we just updated it. And it is the area between Sea Crest, um, and the tracks, and it goes one block deep on both sides of, um, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. The second one is the cultural district, which is an update from what used to be called the Ocean Avenue District. It covers Ocean Avenue from Sea Crest to the tracks again, and goes from northeast First Avenue, um, down to southeast Second Avenue. And the third overlay is completely new. It is on Boynton Beach Boulevard, and it goes from 95 to the tracks, and again goes one block deep on both the north and south side of Boynton Beach Boulevard. Generally, the overlays cover these different areas. I'll talk about some of the, um, some of the important aspects. The first two is what I just said, that they are a defined area, so they're geographic specific, which means that these parcels will have an underlying zoning district and also an overlay to help with consistency issues. Um, and then the number three is conflict. If there is conflict between the underlying zoning district and the overlay, the overlay, um, takes precedent. The biggest section of these overlays are the Modified Building and Site Regulations. It covers things like lot area, the frontage. Um, the two that we'll talk about today are the pedestrian zone and the scale and the height. So the pedestrian zone, um, which is already laid out for us in the CRA plan, this is just, again, just making it codified, and you've been seeing this in some of our projects already. There are three components to this, um, pedestrian zone. The first is, um, some sort of street tree along the street sidewalks that vary between eight and 10 feet, and then an eight-foot active area. Depending on where you are in the overlays, different parts of these components are required. Essentially, the first two are always required, and the third, it, it'll depend on where you are. These areas can be used for two different things, in our mixed use and commercial areas. They are predominantly used for, um, outdoor dining and, um, outdoor display of merchandise. In our residential areas, it becomes more of a design influence, on making sure that buildings are fronting the street, that we're allowing for landscaping and front yards, um, in front of the building. So this will avoid having our buildings right up onto our right-of-way. So the second big topic under the Modified Building Standards are scale and height. The overall heights are still regulated by the underlying zoning district. What this does is cap what's in red, it's the first portion. It says that if you're on the street, um, this example is Ocean Avenue, you are capped at 35 feet, which comes straight out of the redevelopment plan also, and that height has to be maintained for at least 30 feet deep. And then your overall height is still regulated by your zoning district. This is the Boynton Beach overlay, um, section, so this does the same thing. The overall height is still regulated by your zoning. The red portion, though, caps anything that's on the street at 45 feet, and that height has to be, um, consistent for at least 10 feet deep. The last section that I'll go over is building design. There are kind of three components within this section. We talk about building orientation to make sure our buildings are facing the streets, fenestration requirements, which is, um, glazing windows, and the last one would be wall articulation, which is illustrated in that diagram. And I am here if you have any specific questions on anything that's covered in the revision.
So, can you go back one slide? So all the contents, did you change all of the things here, or just the things that you mentioned? There's, you know, accessory structures, parking, is that also part of this as well?
In the actual revision, yes, all of these, the, all of the nine are covered within the, the, um, the revision.
Okay. And so my main question is, is that, you know, we're putting this, is there any subjective view to any things here? In the sense is that, for example, we had the, the 45 feet and then the, the 10 feet. If someone says, hey, you know, I can do 35 feet, but then I only want it five feet deep, is there any sort of subjectivity?
Um, I wouldn't call it subjectivity, but we do have, like, relief, the same way we do out of some of our already existing design standards. If they are meeting the intent of these codes, but not the letter of them, they can apply to deviate from them.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, thank you. Yes, Commissioner McCray?
This is really more just like language to clean up, like, for the Town Square project, you know? That's, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's where I'm at, okay, I'm good.
Anything else from the board? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
Some o.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Katz. Commissioner McCray.
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus.
Aye.
Commissioner Penserga.
Yes.
Mayor Grant.
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is 8B, approved request for conditional use of major site plan modification for 7-Eleven Inc. to allow redevelopment of a, for a new 2,540 square foot convenience store, a 3,096 square foot gas station canopy, six pump stations and related site amenities, and improvements on a .84 acre parcel located at 4798 North Congress Avenue in the C3 zoning district.
This matter is quasi-judicial. Anybody who intends to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. If you have special qualifications to testify, architect, engineer, plan, or something of that nature, please let the commission know your qualifications so they can weigh your testimony. In that regard, if there are documents you want to be made part of the record that are not already part of the record, that was before the planning and development board and the commission tonight, you need to identify them, and copies need to be left with the clerk.
Good evening, um, for the record, Josh Long, AICP. I'm an AICP certified planner with the Gunster Law Firm, 777 South Flagler Drive, West Palm Beach, Florida. Also with me tonight is Brian Seymour, the attorney for the project from Gunster. We do have representatives from 7-Eleven and the engineering firm as well, if you have any additional questions. So we have, uh, today an, an application that was approved by the PND Board, 7-0, at the May 28th hearing. Did I do that? There we go, sorry. So the, real quickly, the reason why we are here. 7-Eleven is on a nationwide campaign to redo their store models. Uh, convenience stores have changed over the last couple decades, um, and consumers now demand fresh foods, gourmet coffees, better architecture, better security, all these other things. So that is what we have here today. You may notice this site and be familiar with it. This is the Boynton Lakes Plaza. Our, uh, one acre parcel is located on the, um, corner there of Hypoluxo Road and Congress Avenue, which is highlighted in green. This is a, uh, an image of the existing site. Here's the aerial image. As you can see, this is an older 1980s style development. This store was built around 1985. You may see these older stores and be familiar with it, where you have a convenience store under the canopy, um, and then the fuel positions are actually under the canopy as well. Uh, this store has a, uh, car wash along the south edge. The car wash, uh, will be removed and will not be part of the new application. Uh, I think this is probably the most important slide, um, that we have. As you can see, uh, this is a building that has absolutely no architectural elements. Uh, it's a simple box, and there's no landscaping, no landscape, uh, around the building at all. Uh, the very minimal parking in front of the building, um, and we're going to be completely changing this and bringing you a, a brand-new, modern store. Uh, this is the layout for the store. The store is on the east side of the property. You do have adequate parking along the side. Uh, the fuel canopy is on the west side of the property. Uh, the ingress and egress pattern has been, uh, revised in accordance with the Palm Beach County traffic standards. One of the, uh, unsafe conditions was the, uh, one-way exit into an adjacent, uh, out parcel on the northeast corner, and that's going to be revised as part of this application. And so we do have the building front to foundation here, um, the architectural details as well that show the architecture is being increased. And, uh, with that, uh, we do conclude our presentation and, uh, ask for your approval. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, sir. You made one, um, statement, you know, that I'm kind of enjoying what I'm hearing about, you know, you kind of redoing the 7-Elevens. Follow me. We have a 7-Eleven in Boynton on Military Trail. We got a 7-Eleven on Boynton Beach Boulevard. We got a 7-Eleven on Wolfite. Okay, are you all going to be doing anything with those? Are y'all on these, or what?
I do have representative from 7-Eleven here, he might know more about those specific stores.
Somebody know more, okay.
7-Eleven does have 80,000 stores across the world.
Sir, I appreciate that, but I'm worried about the ones in Boynton right now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just to speak on specifically, uh, Eric LaVorio with 7-Eleven, uh, real estate representative with 7-Eleven. To answer that question, we do have a redevelopment plan that we're going through. Uh, we have a lot of older facilities, as I'm sure you're aware. Um, we've been around for, you know, 65 years or 70 years, and we do have a plan for those stores. I cannot give you an exact timeframe, but we do plan to put in all of our new beverage bars, newer coffee standards, more fresh food service offerings, um, all to go in hand with, with what our newer, uh, prototype typical stores are going to be. So yes, there is a plan, uh, but I don't have necessarily a timeframe on that.
Okay, thank you. This, this question I have now is for staff. On Congress Avenue from Hypoluxo all the way to the end of our line, close to Delray, how many gas stations we have out there? You can get it, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, but, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of the project, but look like everywhere I look now, I see a gas station, I see a wah-wah, woo-woo, whatever they call that stuff, but they pop it up everywhere, you know, and I'm like saying, here, we got another one, and another one. And I, I'm just saying, you know, y'all have my blessings, but I'm just saying, I don't want us to overdue with the gas station, we have all these cars, but you got my blessing, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I, I need to know how many gas stations on Congress Avenue.
Off the top my head, I'm not certain, I would guess between four and six.
Okay, so this would be number seven?
No, this is replacing an existing one.
You're replacing this one?
Yes. It's an upgrade to an existing site.
Okay, what's the name of the station already there? Mobile?
It's a mobile gas station.
Oh, you're saying it's a mobile?
Absolutely.
It's mobile?
For the record, Brian Seymour, on behalf of 7-Eleven. Mr. McCray, the, the, what happens sometimes with 7-Elevens is they'll brand one of the other, uh, gas, uh, companies, so they co-brand with Mobile at this station, so it's a mobile station with a 7-Eleven convenience store, that it, it exists there now and is just going to be reconfigured, as Mr. Long pointed out.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'm good. Okay. Second?
I have a, a couple of comments. So one of the things that, I'm on the, the Palm Tram Service Board, and so one of the things that I always like to ask developments that are on different Palm Tram routes, this is on Palm Tram 2, is that if they, I don't know where the closest bus shelter is, but would you could, uh, one of the things that I, I've had asked is that you get a letter from Palm Tram to see if it is feasible to move a bu, you know, to move the bus stop at your location.
One particular item with this site's location is the, uh, turning lane, Congress, um, to, um, Hypoluxo. You can't put a bus shelter in a, a turning lane that close to the intersection. 7-Eleven routinely, um, pairs up with Palm Tram to put stations near the properties because it's good for business. We definitely, um, like, uh, those stations. However, when you have a, an intersection, a location like this, sometimes you just can't put them in certain locations because of the proximity.
Congress's right turn only lane, though, that is there?
It's very busy, I think, five different lanes there of traffic, you know?
Okay, so would you be willing to get that letter from Palm Tram saying that it is not feasible?
I, I think we can reach out to Palm Tram and talk to them.
Thank you. And the other aspect of it is, is that, uh, you know, I saw the different, uh, landscaping that you're doing. Um, we didn't necessarily get a list of the, the trees or shrubs that are there. One of the big, one of our residents always tries to push for butterfly bushes or butterfly plants.
Don't say bushes, think of plants.
Yeah, yeah. Plants, is that something you'd be willing to put as part of your landscaping? Some more insect-friendly?
If you could provide staff with the species of the landscape plants, we'll give them to our landscape architect and incorporate, we do have some areas where we have lots of shrubs, and we could, we could incorporate that into them.
I, I think our staffers knows plenty of different butterfly plants by now.
Okay, then they'll provide them to us, okay.
And, um, and the last is a, a solar canopy. I know that, you know, you guys are a gas station, and so you guys don't necessarily have the electric charging, but, um, is it any way possible to put a solar canopy on at your location?
Not here, unfortunately, I don't think we could do that. Uh, there are some stations where we are looking at the possibility of, uh, electric vehicle charging possibilities. This site is a little constrained, I don't know how to...
No, I wasn't asking for electric vehicle charging.
Well, but even the solar, the solar canopy would relate, and the solar canopy doesn't really, because of the way we've got things in the small site and the trees and everything else, it doesn't really work so well.
Okay, all right. Those were my questions, so thank you for getting the, the letter, and we'll make that a condition. Yes, Commissioner Penserga?
Just one question. Could you describe generally any security features that you have? I'd like to know that if I were to go there, I'd, I'd feel safe.
No, absolutely. One, one of the items that we're... Yeah, one of the items that we're working with staff right now is to increase the lighting under the canopy to meet SEPTED standards. As your code reads right now, uh, the, the lighting has to be very minimal, unless there are certain areas that would meet SEPTED standards or additional lighting. So we're proposing to staff to have increased lighting, um, around the, under the canopies, because that is one of the most vulnerable positions. that is one of the most vulnerable positions for anybody coming. You get out of the car, you fuel up your car, and you're standing there, and it's very important to have adequate lighting. All the new 7-Elevens also have a closed captioning security system with high-definition TV, so everything is recorded and is very aware that you're being, you know, monitored. 7-Eleven also routinely teams up with the local police and sheriff's departments to allow them to come in and, you know, have their patrol car there while they write their reports to keep that presence there. So 7-Eleven has a long history of, you know, teaming up and being very secure, and especially the new stores have all the new security features built into them.
Yes, Commissioner McCray.
My final comment, we have a new employee, the guy that worked with the trees, what y'all call him, the new?
Landscape architect.
Yeah, we're kind of getting with him, you know, and help the mayor get some butterfly plants, please, thank you.
Absolutely. Happy to.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Are we that excited about 7-Eleven?
There's a man.
Moving on to proposal ordinance number 19-19. Jim?
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, meaning the land development regulations, Chapter 4, Site Development Standards, creating a new Article 12 entitled Fertilizer Use Regulations, providing for conflict, severability codification, and an effective date.
Alan, are you doing it? Yeah.
Yeah, it's a plan. I'll go ahead and do it real quick.
Thank you.
This is, because it'll be quick. Our MPDS permit, which is the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit that the city is a joint partner with, with the county, our MS4 permit requires the cities, as part of their permit, to have these regulations in place to control the use and access to fertilizers. These are, this is standard language from the state that the permit requires us to implement. So we're implementing, we're asking you to approve this, to implement these regulations to be in compliance with our permit.
Perfect. Motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
I understand what it is. I would just like for you to state it for the record. This is a way for us to improve our waterways and whatnot, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. The rules are set up to protect fertilizer from running into the open water space to, oh, there's our presentation. Very good. I'm just going to go through it quick. To protect the groundwater, the surface water from nutrients like phosphorus and nitrogen, which is in fertilizer. So there's a lot of rules to say where you put it, how you should put it, where it should go, and we're going to continue working with the state. We're one of the more advanced cities working with the state, talk to Representative Casello. We still want to work on a fertilizer nitrogen-type state statute that allows us to actually, if chosen, to tax the nitrogen level in fertilizers to promote the best use of those fertilizers in the best places, because they're very important, but if they're used in the wrong place and they get in the waterways, they create the algae blooms that we see. So that's one of the reasons for algae blooms, is the fertilizer, so.
Thank you.
I think that answered your question.
Yes, it does, thank you.
You asked the same question, you answered mine, yeah. When they talk about that blue algae running off up there, and, okay.
Green algae.
Green algae, yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Penzerga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz? Lotus 5-0.
All right. Moving on to the city manager's report.
David Scott will be presenting a status report to the commission tonight on how we've been doing with our Building Wealth Program.
Good evening, Mayor.
David, excuse me, before you get started, I read this, and I got with Lori, because when I read it and kept reading it, it didn't make sense to me. And, you know, I'm just saying, I was like a run-on paragraph almost, and I kept telling her, I said, this doesn't, she said, you're going to explain it. So please explain it, because I called her three times, I said, it still don't make sense.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. David Scott, Director of Economic Development and Strategy. Tonight, we're going to report out on building wealth in the community. What does that mean to the city and what does building wealth mean? Building wealth to us means focusing on every redevelopment, development, construction project, so we can maximize the expenditure and investment within our local communities within Boynton Beach. So we come up with different strategies, and I'll move on into those strategies as to how we are moving forward, what those strategies are, and how we have implemented those strategies, and be able to report out on different projects and initiatives around those strategies and how well or how not well they are doing within the city. So with me, I have also Mark Heffernan with ETL Development to talk on the Town Square portion of his presentation, and also Andrew Mack will also assist us with the city's SRTAX conversation in the Sarah Sims Park.
David, excuse me, I know what's wrong. What got me was, when I kept reading this, it said, "local business spending for city." And I'm like saying, businesses, they're spending money, and I didn't, but that's what I got confused on.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Because that didn't make sense.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Again, let me go back, there we go. Again, building, we look at building wealth in the city, in the community, as to how we can support local businesses. So you hear a lot of us talking about things like local business preference, different strategies on investment, how do we engage our local community and local businesses to a much deeper degree, how do we focus on different strategies during workforce development, how do we focus on things like doing workshops for our local businesses. So all of that is really talking about building wealth, because we believe that as our local businesses grow, they will then continue to expend money within the city and also hire local. So that's our strategy around building wealth, and that's quick and high-level about what building wealth means to us. I've mentioned targeted procurement. So targeted procurement, again, is taking our strategies, making sure that we focus on local businesses first, and try to make sure that our local businesses are supported and continue to grow. So every dollar that we spend, we try to make sure that we spend that dollar locally. So the commissioner's heard us talk about our local business preference. About a year or so ago, we implemented a local business preference policy that allows us to look at bid projects and responses to proposals, and if they're within 5% or 5 points or within $5,000, we're able to award that project to a local business. We also look at different strategies around how do we procure and focus on our local business as we go to award projects, and we understand that we need an intermediary or champion. And that champion is either the project manager that understands the focus of why we do what we do, and so they can look at different strategies such as targeted procurement and recruitment, where we could break projects up or unbundling. We break projects up into smaller projects so our local businesses can respond. So rather than doing a $30 million project, we could break it down into what feasible amounts, maybe it's $1 million projects or maybe it was smaller projects, so our local businesses, small businesses can participate. We also look at, again, the targeted recruitment means we could also look at how we procure. So if we, under a certain threshold, we can then solicit three book quotes, and we can use three quotes to focus on three local businesses that would then give us quotes and responses to those bids. And then we talk about outreach. So we use job fairs. Commissioner, you attended a couple of our job fairs on Sarah Sims and some others. Town Square, we had job fairs around Town Square. We also use media with Eleanor to push that information out, as we advertise with different projects. And we also use direct contacts. A lot of times, we reach directly to our small businesses to make sure they are aware that the bid is on the street and that they can then respond to that bid. So we use all of these strategies to try to do the best we can to get the information out and try to get our local businesses to respond. Now, we're not perfect, there's a lot of work still to be done, and that's why we recognize that. And in the upcoming year and going forward, we will start doing more workshops around local business development. Talked with Sherri Johnson today about her career fair coming up, and we see a partnership with her on business development and local workforce development. As we talk about our project spend, so we, the commission asks us to look at how we are spending the money and are we spending it locally. So we look at the overall spend for the city, and that's the total spend for city projects, and that's the local spend, over $2.8 million has been local spend. Is there work to be done? Yes, we definitely recognize there's more work to be done there, and we are continuing to grow that and work on that. City SRTAX, again, here's the city SRTAX number and how we're spending that. Andrew will come up after I finish this slide and talk a little bit about the city's SRTAX spending, and Sarah Sims, what worked, what didn't work with Sarah Sims, and how we could do better going forward. And then Mark and his team will talk about Town Square and the success they've had with that project.
David, before you go, my phone's dead, I don't have a calculator. Can you give me a percentage of what those numbers are? I can.
Off the top, if I recall, off the top of my head, Commissioner, the city projects were very low, like less than 1%. City SRTAX was about the, about 10, it was about 9%, 9%. And Sarah Sims, of course, here, and Town Square is around 14, 15%.
And the total?
Total, because it's around 14, 15%. I'm sorry, it's much lower because of its total city spend. I would have to calculate that for you. Calculator, real quick. It was about 6%.
George, you can go calculator. Three and a half. Three and a half.
Three and a half, thank you. Oh, three.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
You finished with your question?
Again, I'm sorry.
She says she finished with her question. Let me jump in again. Okay, I know you said that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. We all understand that. Okay, so that I'm a contractor, follow me, and I come up in my proposal to not meet city standards or the standards that you all are looking for. Do you all bring these people in and say, I want to sit down with you and explain why this did not happen, and next time, if you present something again, this is what we would be looking for? Do you educate those who do not make the grade?
No, not yet. And that is one of the things that we definitely, I have had experience with that, and that's definitely, Commissioner, you're right on point. That is something we need to do. We need to follow up with those contractors, let them know what they did right or what they did wrong, so that they can be better prepared to bid on the next project.
Thank you.
You're absolutely right.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yes, and you'll hear it on Town Square, in fact, we have a contractor here who we did that with, and it was very successful. So we have his success story.
Okay.
Andrew?
Good evening, Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. I won't go back into the numbers, I know that David went over those, but I will go into some of the key findings that we've been doing with the SRTAX projects. We have had a lot of success in implementing the local preference when we had single trade contracts. So those would be like electrical or fencing repairs or supplies for electrical. So we've actually, as you can see, we had about roughly 10, 9.9% success rate on local spend on the SRTAX dollars. Some of those local contractors that we use were Davco Electric, TJ Bowles Electric, Alpha Fence, Allied Fence, and City Electric Supplies. So it's a little bit easier to procure those contracts when you have a single trade. When you get multiple trades, it's a little bit more difficult, because those types of vendors aren't actually, we don't have a lot of those types of vendors in the city that are bidding on the smaller projects. Speaking to Sarah Sims, this is one of the projects that we've, we did reach out to a lot of local vendors. We broke the project down into single trades. Unfortunately, some of those single trades we reached out to just were too busy and didn't want to bid. Actually, TJ Bowles picked up the drawings and was going to bid the project, but was unable to bid for Sarah Sims. Some of the other stuff that we're doing, you know, we reached out through trades as far as through the internet and through our contacts in the community. I think some of the things that will go forward is trying to, like you mentioned, is when we're following up with bids and what they did and didn't do well. When it comes to a public procurement process, that's a little bit more difficult until after the awards or bid are awarded, then we can speak to them. But as far as doing solicitations for single trades, we will start working with them as far as do a little bit more helping, coaching them on making sure that we're getting apples to apples and that we're helping them obtain more work. One of the other things I think we'll work on is, and hopefully with David, is doing some mentoring and trying to see if we can partner up some of the smaller contractors that we have in the city with maybe some of the larger ones, to see if they can help them implement in getting some of this work as well, so.
I know what Sarah Sims, because of like of local contractors and individuals working, we fell behind. How long do you all let a project stay on the table? I'm just saying, if I'm a local contractor and I bid, and, you know, I'm just saying, when y'all say that we need to, this is not working, we need to kind of like move ahead now.
Typically, what we do is when we have a contract, a project like that, we write our schedule up front, and once we get to the point where it starts to impact the schedule, we have to make a decision to move forward. And certain, some of those cases, like with the, we used our minor construction bid, which is our four pre-qualified contractors, for that was the restroom and the pavilions. That was one of the things that we had to do that, because we weren't able to find contractors in time, so we had to use a minor construction. Okay, any questions? Thank you.
And that's the key, if I may, Mayor, is maintaining that balance. We absolutely experienced, and I will tell you, was what would normally have been a project that we would put out, here are the plans, we need a GC to build it. We broke it down into, by the time we were done, 10 individually bid trades. The staff time, the procurement time, we spent probably, we lost, not lost, we invested a good four months that added to this process of getting this project done, trying to individually go out and seek the vendors and seek the contractors. So you need to find that balance, and we're learning that, because this is only, you know, going into our first year of the program. At what point is it not feasible, not efficient, not practical use of your public resources to accomplish something? So we're, you know, we're going to, we're going to figure it out as we go on, but that's a very important key, Commissioner, is balancing efficiency with getting your business done versus trying to.
Yeah, because I'm just saying, you know, we're finding our way, but I'm just saying, but as we find our way, we need to at least continue to.
Be mindful of.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Wasting your time, staff time, when things can be rolling along. Hello, you.
Good evening. Mark Heffernan, your master developer for Town Square. And Commissioner McCray, I had as much difficulty understanding these numbers as you did, but David's got me straightened out. We, for the city, have five different projects undertaking in Town Square. We have the high school, the police, the district energy, the city hall library, and then all the related site work. I believe the way this was set up, the fire station is not shown as a separate project, but obviously that's tied in with this project also. As I mentioned, we're at 14% of the overall purchase. The term total spend really, not total purchase to date. In the case of the police station, we're nearly 50% of the project is being built by local Boynton Beach, either contractors, suppliers, labor. It's been really an experience where I came out of the construction industry with a lot of mandates, cities that go in and say, we're going to mandate, you're going to do 30%, which is the mandate on Broward County's new convention center. It's a big challenge, particularly for a city that doesn't necessarily have the resources. We have a guest speaker here tonight, and we're going to let him tell his story, because this is a long, long-term proposal for Boynton Beach. It's not only putting the wealth back into the community, but it's training and it's keeping that staff growing, it's keeping the businesses growing. And long-term, we haven't got into the private sector. I know.
helped write your business plan for building wealth. It was really an experience, it was a great experience. We have Sophia Nelson here, who joined our team along with Charisma Adams. I'm going to let them come up and introduce our guest speaker and just show you an example of beyond just doing what we've been able to do so far, of how it's also carrying past Town Square, helping you to grow business.
Wait, 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 before you come up.
Please.
Thank you. The projects that we got, I'm just saying, with what we're doing and trying to build wealth, these projects are not going to come in over budget, they're going to come in under budget?
We are actually under budget, thanks to Collins Bee Hag, Big Hairy Odious Gold. We live with it every month, every week, every day, and right now, we're not only on budget, but we're on schedule. So, we're excited. I know you were there at the Tilt Wall panel erection that started Monday, so we'll keep you posted on that.
Good evening, Sophia Nelson, Mayor Davis. I'm going to bring up Charisma Adams, who's working with me diligently to put Boynton Beach back to work, and then she's also going to, she's going to introduce our guest speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Charisma Adams, and I work on the SC Nelson team specifically in the area of community outreach to increase our local participation on this Town Square project. One of the things that I'm tasked to do is reach out to community organizations within the city of Boynton, looking for referrals. I thoroughly source through your text receipts searches, and one of the community organizations we reached out to was Connect the Greatness, and the founder, Cassandra Corbin, that is, is here. I reached out to her, because one of our objectives is to identify local contractors who we can introduce to opportunities on the Town Square project. Through her, she made a referral to Mr. Michael Evans. Evans is the owner of Evans AC, and, I'm sorry, Evans Air, Evans Air LLC. And I reached out to Mr. Evans probably about August of last year, and asked him about his interest in bidding on the Town Square project for AC opportunities. As I began to qualify him, I realized that he was not able to bid on the opportunity at the time, because the largest scope of work he had completed to date was not high enough. But I did ask him if he would continue to partner with us throughout the duration of this project and allow us to work with him to get him to the capacity that we need in order to bid on future opportunities. Mr. Evans was grateful, he obliged, so I sent him over to our bonding partner, who's Shakri Bryant. She owns Innovative Bonding Services. And they had a conversation early, I'm sorry, late fall last year. At the time, he was not able to secure bonding. They were not able to go all the way through the process, because he had some things that he needed to work on personally to get to that place. He did the work, and we connected again probably maybe two months ago. We had a conversation, we were able to connect him to our bonding partner again, whereas in August, I think the largest scope was about $60,000 to $70,000 of capacity he was able to handle. He had pre-approved a couple of weeks ago for $400,000 in bonding, and now we're going to be able to place him open for a bid in a future opportunity. So, this is Mr. Michael Evans from Evans Air.
Hi, y'all. I'm Michael Evans from Evans Air. I want to thank y'all for the work y'all do. Commissioner McCray, glad to see you again.
Don't sing him out.
Well, I'm not, because I'm also going to sing the mayor grant out. He's always around some of the places we end up together. But as Charisma said, they did reach out to me, and at the time, I wasn't able to do anything, but earlier, you asked, do they do follow-ups? She's followed up with me about three times, so they are actually reaching back out when we can't qualify, and she reached out to me, and I did finally get with the bonding agency, and I was approved for $400,000 worth of bonding. So, now I can bid on those projects. I do have, in the past, I have done projects for the government, but I was always the subcontractor, so I fell under the contractor's bonding. Now, through that program, I can grow my business better and get, you know, ahead of the game and be more successful, because now, instead of going under the contractor, I can bid, I can bid on these jobs directly myself. So, I thank you guys for all that, and I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The Commissioners, that's, that's what this is really all about. When we talk about building wealth, we really try to create that success story, and we do have to provide those wraparound services to those businesses that we run into that need support. And so, the Town Square project was one of those projects that we partnered with Mark and said, "This is what we want to do." He brought on Charisma and Sophia and provided those services. So, they bid those projects out, they sourced those contractors, and when they run into a challenge like this gentleman, they then refer them to other support services that help them get to it. Now, this gentleman not only can bid on Town Square project, but he now can bid on other projects, not only in Boynton, in Palm Beach County, but in the state of Florida, and he brings the money back here to the city. So, that's what building wealth is all about.
See, that's what I was talking about.
That's exactly what you were talking about.
Okay, that's what I was talking about.
And we need to do it on the city side a lot better.
Yeah, reach out, and keep reaching out till you pull him in. Okay.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Yes, Mayor?
I do appreciate the personal testimony. I'd like to know how many others are like Mr. Evans. Are there others like Mr. Evans?
There are a lot others out there that we've run into.
I'd like a list or at least some type of tangible...
If you want to talk, speak.
I'm sorry, a list. Like him as in that did not have bonding, that were able to...
No, just any of these examples of individuals who we've taken through the process, who maybe perhaps didn't have the bonding or didn't have the capacity or whatever it may be, but we've brought them to, up to speed, or we've allowed them to now bid on certain contracts. It doesn't have to be right now, I just would like a report of that.
Let me clarify. I thought you were asking how many did we run into that had problems or challenges, but we could get you a much smaller list when you talk about all of those that we helped give additional support to. My initial response was many, but I just wanted to clarify, the many was, there were few that had a lot, that had challenges, but there were very few that went through the process. So, I'll get you that list.
Yeah, no, I think my, yes, that is part of it, but what I'm also asking is just, I'd like to see the list of Boynton businesses, or at least give me a ballpark number today if you can, but I'd like a list of how many businesses are within the state limits that have been able to be a part of this process and are now involved or potentially could be involved in the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Questions from the board? Do we need a motion to approve or...
No, I...
I was just a report.
Yeah, no.
Good. I always ask.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, Commissioner McCray, you missed the strategic planning, so one of the things that we're adding as an initiative is the Seacrest Corridor. So, that was one of the future agenda items that I had put on, and so that is going to be moved into one of our strategic plans priorities.
All right, you are working. I'd like to let me know what happened, okay?
So...
All right. Got enough strategic plan.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. All those opposed? Let me adjourn.[1749.25]